What years?
February thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Over ten years on top of this. Atop of the sixty-six I already got already in the bag. Yeah. You're still gonna be young. Just a little bit.
Let me lose.
It'll be up to you to carry on next.
Yes. I think I've trained my paddle pretty well.
That one, that's great. I just got. Oh, everyone has buttons now.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, Rick just got back. Okay. And he says, I'm great, still alive, but yeah, ninety-three. We did an equation and he was still there. Wow, he just set a, wow, speed record. He's a legend. God, he really is. He's a legend. You're saying eighties old, he's ninety-three instead of ninety. Well, I don't know. It's the same. I don't, we're very young.
Go on.
So is that my new laptop?
Close.
My new laptop.
So whenever you're ready to share it, you can just start sharing space.
Yeah, so we'll see. I know my family's not.
Okay, I can't like.
I have to. I thought.
I would try to find this right there.
It's just.
The audio about this.
And I was told.
And it's recording.
The commission.
It's last.
Someone resigned. Okay, if that sounds right. So I'm curious what these, because they said I'm just.
He was the same year as the guy expire this year. Do I expire this year?
Ouch.
I just did the same thing.
Bang to the shin there? Yeah.
Um, I think, yeah, we'll have to renew even.
You expire this year?
Yeah, I think I did.
Yeah, maybe we should word that better.
It's something that expires.
Well, then, so I was just filling in Silas.
Yeah.
Position, so I expire as well this year. Not all, we won't expire. This was just a taste of what it's like to be on the planning commission. Now you get to decide. Get your laptop and you're out next month.
We want to sign you up for another, what, eight years, something like.
Six.
I think they're five years.
Oh, no kidding, it's six.
Did the city council reexamine? Because I still remember the verbiage. Are we on? Before I start signing.
No, no, it's fine.
Yes, we are being recorded.
Oh, okay.
Mayor goes the, that was God.
Yeah, well, I was here when the city council voted me in and they said that, because I live in the UGA, that I don't have skin in the game. They were going to relook at that. So I was curious if they relooked at that, so I might not even be eligible.
No, I bet sleeping dogs fly.
Yeah, you have kids that go to school here, face towards here. I know, like.
We used to do, you know, we used to make sure we had somebody from the UGA. We haven't, not new.
Well, not recently, but when I, when I first started, they were making sure there was somebody who was from the UGA and on the commission when they could.
With where you guys are making decisions, that makes sense to me because if they decide next year that my farm is inside city limits, I want to. Yeah.
Right, and that was the point. But it's down to the point, it was the city's planning, but you live in the county and it could be.
Yeah, well, true.
Yes.
And like, it's good.
Yes, yes, I forgot.
Oh, yeah.
UGA expansion.
So Joe.
They don't happen like all the time.
But that's a good, but this is the only thing on the agenda.
They were not.
Just do a quick roll call.
So. Call order. You are real, well, no, man.
He's excused, he mentioned last thing he got.
So should we call this to order?
Probably.
You know what, this is a web session, I'm not, I'm sure you're authoritative.
Nicole said she's not hard to shut.
Oh, behold, he gave me the floor. So, uh, on hold. Is this a pledge allegiance thing or this will?
Yeah.
Okay, we all stand, pledge allegiance and assemble here. And it is, uh, six thirty-three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call on. Commissioner Huggins.
Super things constituting the great public, which said.
Commissioner Huggins. Commissioner, here, here. Yeah, Commissioner Sexton.
Here.
Commissioner Jasper.
Here.
Commissioner Beazey. There. Commissioner Burnett, here. Commissioner Breger.
Here.
Commissioner Yvonne.
He's excused.
Excused, okay. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you for gathering on an off day for planning commission. So I put together a couple of activities to help us get to a final product for this vision statement. Um, the first one we're gonna do is gonna help us identify any weaknesses that are in it right now. So this is gonna be a kind of fun exercise where you'll get to work individually and then later in teams of two, maybe three, since we've got seven, or nope, two, two, because we've got six. Um, we're gonna come up with a list of elements that make up the absolute worst vision statement. Okay? And we'll see later if any of those bad elements are present. In this sort of fashion, so I'm gonna, I'm up here, so the first thing, I'll give you an example of what I need to do. What would be like the good and the bad? Okay, so an element, tell me if y'all agree with me. Um, for a really bad vision statement would be that it's uninspiring, right?
Yeah.
Uh, there is, it's broken. Okay. So.
It just has to stay, it just has to stay on this, the album on the left side.
Okay.
And I'll put sugar over it a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so in front of you, everyone, you should have a little index card. Okay. I want you individually for five minutes, make a list of bad elements.
In any.
Any place, generalized, I don't want you to be specific yet, so. Blue and next card, write a list, five minutes, go.
Inspiring things. Does spelling count?
It will not be created.
They get to use yours?
No.
Yeah.
Cheating.
And, uh, synonyms?
Are these single words or sentences?
Single words, you can put sentences, whatever you feel is right.
These are the bad ones.
Worst bad ones, worst vision statement you can think of has these elements in it. About two minutes left.
You're quiet. Don't. I can hear a signal.
I can steal the heat coming out of the brain.
You're studying.
Tim originally showed up.
There's a real movie.
Hey.
Okay. Your list. So everyone, I want you to now turn to a partner, share what you came up with. Thanks, lovely. Don't take another five minutes to do that and discuss this, you need to, why'd you choose what you chose?
Is this a test?
Yeah, it's a test.
So.
Switching cards. So I'm doing.
All right, setback. Be honest with us. You're great.
Oh, I like.
Isn't that really, it's people's eyes.
It's really creative. I like this.
Yeah.
There's nothing else. We're all the same page. The ours? No, we're not supposed to share. Yeah. No, I don't.
This is gonna get conservative.
Nicole's gonna be yelling at you.
Oh, so.
That hard to. She, I don't want to.
No cross pollination. Don't get conservative.
No cross poll. I think I know this and you're not fucking with me.
Oh, he did it.
You know, when I.
Okay.
Say that.
I think it's really important that, you know, where you're.
Oh, no.
Strong things, solid animation. And I would like to have some. But knowledge of what's not only been accomplished, but why are we gonna have future success? I really picked, you know, honestly, uh, this is a golden age for this city. First time I came, this is thirty-four years ago. Didn't know Cedar Woolley. Earlier came to Parkland. Me and my former wife were heading here to North Catscape National Park. And the first thing I noticed was all the industrial stuff. I was like, this is a place I never wanted so bad. Until now I'm living. Dinner, it's all, but you know what? We got some amazing stuff here, but there's also things that are part of our history that, uh, how we were gonna follow you, of how we're gonna evolve on stuff. This used to be a Fred Flintstone town, now it's not, not even close to it.
What's really interesting is that, to me, is that when I was, when I was a kid, I was in the sixties, Cedar Woolley had a population of about five thousand and that was, that was down from what it had, but all of Skidmore County had all been hollowed out after the dam through built and the, and the, basically all construction that was left. I mean, in the, I can remember the forties or fifties, they were gonna run a streetcar from the, the fair havens came down and hooked up to Cedar Woolley and they were gonna run a streetcar in Hamilton. There were, there were almost five thousand people living in a car. And so Cedar Woolley's already been through a huge bust, that places like the Rust Belt in Ohio and that area are, uh, like are going through now. And, and hopefully coming out of, and, uh, and then when I was, uh, so it was about five thousand that time. When I was thirteen years old, after Northern State and Statute and most of the logging industry shut down, it was twenty-five hundred people in Cedar Woolley. And, uh, and they, you know, it was like the Seattle thing, you know, last person to leave Cedar Woolley, please turn out the lights. But, um, but by the time I back from someone, so probably about nineteen, uh, when I was later than that, when I came back to University of Washington, so in the early eighties, we had already achieved like nine thousand and now we're at, uh, it's, now we're pulling it around.
You know what, I remember this happening there. The Puget Sound Business Journal. Something shut down, unemployment rate in the state is just, it's over thirty percent. I wanna say thirty-six percent, this ends my ads line down beginning. And that's the only reason I remember it, because more of the business kind of spread. Like I said, I never even was in this town, you know, until we were there, and it's like, oh, this is Cedar Woolley, thirty-six percent unemployment. Right? But look at where we transitioned from thirty-plus years ago. And you've been around here forever, but you're the historian on this planning commission.
Well, that was another, that's another interesting point is that, you know, when, when Northern State and all that shut down, we had, we had thirty doctors in Cedar Woolley, right? Because they all worked, they worked up at the hospital, right? We had, we had lawyers everywhere, you know, because they were, they were representing families and, and, and things that were actually in the hospital. And so this is a highly educated town and, um, uh, and so, you know, now it has kind of a hip, uh, uh, country hip, feels here, but at the time it wasn't. Twenty, thirty engineers over here and there, in, uh, status steel. So it was a very highly educated, we had, we had two work forces, of course, we had the, the farming and the, and the, you know, logging category.
Yep.
I think that's.
Right, time.
That's.
Okay, so each set of partners.
Question.
I want you to choose someone who will present to me. Your list, what did you both come up with for bad elements in the mission statement? Started.
She made a good list. Really great, I made an excellent list.
Everybody else. Spain on top, I like it. Yes, go.
I picked like words and then slowly got longer and longer, like half sentences and she had ideas that were bad, so I thought, I liked her as very.
You want all of these?
Whichever you felt resonated between both people.
I think yours resonated. That doesn't surprise me otherwise.
So vague language or generic? Um, boring. Totally complex wording, awkward sentences.
No wonder we all get along. Right?
Extremely long vision statement. Uh, pretentious language. And then poor grammar, spelling, punctuation.
That's why we have new working meetings. So to add to it, unattainable, negative, fictional false. Mention another, uh, this is great, mention another city.
What's gonna be the next new city?
Yeah. Not on Seattle.
Abstract. You're got metrics and you're gonna be totally vague. You have to write faster.
No.
Overly long, complicated.
After mentions another city, what'd you have?
Oh, no.
We have, uh, goals already accomplished. Abstract without metrics. This is really good.
Sorry, slam cut. Oh, okay, I'm gonna put abstract. Good? Good?
Thank you. Uh, lack of audience, uh, wordy. I mean, I guess. Wordy, um, uh, run-on sentences. Uh, too many adjectives. Uh, trying to be all things to all people, didn't have a word for that. Well, bar, did I say part?
Part, she kind of goes up there with.
Yeah.
It's already.
Yeah, overselling.
All sorts of.
Overselling of that's kind of. Forty. Uh, I think you already had their comparisons, comparisons.
Comparisons was already like, like mentioning other cities, but yeah.
And I think you already have intrusions in there, basically, someone's a little lost. Yeah, um, and then, um, aiming at an eighty-minute, aiming at just a particular segment of the population. And exclusionary, it's the last. Well, good job.
Oh, okay. So let's talk about this list. Yeah, can we add a couple? Sure, yeah.
Virtue signaling, green agenda. And the word. What do you mean? You mean by that? Say words that people wanna hear rather than what you are.
Yeah, from here, looking in the mirror and then, uh, and then projecting that on the other side or vice versa.
Sorry, what was the other one?
Uh, green agenda.
I like, um, Joe had lack of respect for the past. Okay. Are any of these pointing out to anyone you need to talk? I like. I wanna talk more about this. Virtue signal, I know we briefly, like, what do you wanna hear, but can we go into more depth on that one? So when you're, I guess from an outside perspective on Cedar Woolley. How do you think? How do you think someone who's not from around here? Would describe Cedar, they've just visited, good timing too. And I must.
Well, I could give you a very clear example. How important it is when you're in public. Okay, you're a parent, again, wrestling. And when I see a parent, thousands of people, one place, acting out, they're standing up with their cups blue, they're making a fool of themselves. Everybody in the stands is looking at them, that that individual represents the entire city of Cedar Woolley, which is very unfortunate. But you wanna know what is what it is at the end of the day? So I think what's, what's important is we understand the responsibility that we have to a community. And obviously, we're all here for the right reason, I believe. Okay, we're, we're not about us, we're about community, which that's gonna be on the good list, that's gonna be on the other side.
Coming soon.
Of how important community is, but also how you behave. Uh, you know, when, when you're in a, a certain kind of setting, that, uh, yeah, I, I think that we as planning commissioners, elected officials, what we do, we're gonna be judged in the future based upon believing that, that we didn't have ourselves in mind. That it was about this city and why we all love living in Skidmore County. And I'm, I'm one of those, I, I'm, I'm one of those guys that no matter where I'm at, I'm going back on vacation because I live in this town. It's always sunny in Cedar Woolley, in my, in my view, okay? It's like any other kind of place, this place is really special for a whole lot of reasons. And getting that out in the vision statement as to where we've been, but why this is an amazing place? I want kids to have their high school girlfriend that they're married sixty years and they don't wanna leave this town. This is not a place that you leave, this is a place that you wanna spend most of your life. So that, that, that's why. I went on a little bit there.
No, that's fine, I, I think it's interesting you bring up the, the sports thing, when the one person makes it, you know, seem representative of the city.
And they, and they think that, that that's how everybody is in.
Yeah, and that, that's, it's not just sports where that happens, right?
Well, the only two people I've ever grown out of. An event, Cedar Woolley Palace. Like, I can't make this up.
No, and I, I'll echo that, I was the, I was on the football board for four years and we had Cedar Woolley, the very, very, very bad reputation for being like the worst parents on the field. Worse behaved.
Uneducated, worse behaved, think the rules are applied of them, classless, rednecks.
No.
Like the test too, as, as a soccer coach, we couldn't get referees to come to, to, to the soccer matches. Of the way the parents. Team.
Yeah, we almost couldn't get refs for our football games for the same reason.
And it's almost, I hate to say it, but it's almost like a badge of honor, like someone will say something in the stands and everyone giggles because, oh yeah, that's just how Cedar Woolley is and.
Or they're not, our kids are amazing, our kids are. They're the best.
And this, it's kind of a classic, the things that make us the best also make us the worst.
Yeah.
Right? Because when I moved to Cedar Woolley, it was like, oh, you gotta get your kids into sports, you know, the sports here are amazing, you know, that's how your kids get involved and how they get engaged. And there's so many different opportunities and there are, my kids are in lacrosse, wrestling, basketball, baseball, football, you know, you're, they're year-round and it's, you know, it's, it's great experiences, but and, and it, it's really what keeps my kids rooted in the community and keeps them busy and, you know, they meet a lot of great people, you know, and these, but then there's some bad apples that kind of.
Makes us want.
And.
undermines everything.
When, when people are on Facebook commenting that Euro transplant, you're not from here and you're never gonna be from here. That makes someone like me who's only lived here for five years feel like, wow, why am I invested in a community? But I'm never gonna be good enough because I'm not seven generations here. I'm a military retiree, I've lived so many different places, I chose Cedar Woolley. This is where I chose to put roots in a community and I'm doing volunteer work and I'm doing, my, my money is going into the businesses and the school district and all the things. And when, when someone gets mad, they, it wasn't me, it was directed at someone I really would, really, it was me. But because someone, someone got their feelings hurt going on Facebook and saying you're a transplant, you'll never be anything, she's been here forever and she's from Washington.
Well, that, yeah, thirteen years I've been here, but yeah, there, there is very, there, there's a lot of legacy families here, which is amazing, it's part of the. Well, that, yeah, thirteen years I've been here. But yeah, there, there is very, there, there's a lot of legacy families here, which is amazing. It's part of the history, it's part of the culture, it's the pulse of the community. And I'm a history buff, you know, when the first thing I did when I moved to Cedar Woolley is I went to the museum, I bought a book and I read it cover to cover. You know, I was so just like, and I bought a historical home. We live in this plain house, you know, it's like a badge of honor. And we're preserving that home and we're maintaining that home because we love the history of it. You know, but, um, there is kind of this herd mentality here and, and, you know, some of these multi-generational flicks, really, um, who see other people coming in and, you know, we're the ones that are volunteering and putting our time in and they're on their soapboxes on Facebook being keyboard warriors.
I'm here thirty-four years. And it's my accent. I mean, I'm from Jersey, right? I mean, it's not gonna go away. And when people say to me, well, you're not from here. Yeah, I am. Okay, the accent's a little bit different. My former father-in-law was Norwegian. His accent didn't go away. He was here for sixty-plus years. You know, I'm from here. That's just the way it is. And that's when we get into a vision kind of statement as to the inclusiveness.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, it's, it's thinking through how, how can we maybe rectify those gaps that maybe we do have, right? Think of that in the vision statement without being untrue to yourself. So that's the challenge, right? Um, so the next thing I want you guys to do is individually, we're gonna go back to the, uh, draft vision statement. So, I'm just saying, I'm gonna totally break this clip by the end of the video. Anyway. So we're gonna go back to the draft vision statement. Want you to take a look at this list with your pens or you need a highlighter.
You might have to do something really quick. Sorry.
The one thing, I know surveys have been going out, but when the, the lady was talking to us, the majority of surveys just seemed to be one segment of the population, the answers coming back. And it was a lot of, we don't wanna be a better community, we don't want this. And I don't feel like that's representative of the entire city. And when I've walked into small businesses or people I know that are about the middle-aged bracket, they've been like, what survey? Never seen the survey. And so I just wanted to sort of the virtue signaling, add that, that we've spent a lot of money and resources on these surveys. And I wonder if the answers that were published are really representative of the entire community or just the ones willing to take the time to sit and answer a survey. Well, that really can't get around it.
Well, it's always gonna be a challenge. I mean, we went through every single route that we could think of to get that survey out.
You guys absolutely did that. And not meant that as a, didn't mean that as a criticism at all. It just was looking at demographics.
So long, too.
Yeah.
Tell them that there were comments in there. I was talking to, uh, our chief of police. I was like, check this out. It's like, you guys are terrible. If you don't respond to stuff. If anything goes down in this town, you're in the wrong place because they will be there in a second. If anything we have, right? In this town, yeah, we got amazing first responders in so many different ways, fire police, anything. If, if you're on the wrong side of that coin, I'm sorry. Because guess what? You're gonna have a really bad day.
One, one thing that we, we also know from being on the planning commission is, is that Cedar Woolley is a town where where, uh, the public doesn't show up until the stakes are in the ground. And then they go to the city council and they're, they raise hell. You could, you couldn't pay people to come to a planning commission meeting where, where the decisions, where we could actually use the help. And the decisions are being, you know, made for what we're gonna recommend to the city council. But when the stakes go in the yard, the tickets come out and the, and the, um, things get crazy at, at the city hall. And we've tried over the years, many different ways to educate public, uh, about, you know, the importance of coming to planning commission meetings. They don't care if the stakes go in their yard. So anyway, that's a, that's another facet of Cedar Woolley's thing. Interesting. That, that's probably true.
Well.
Small.
Okay, back to this. So I want you to pick up your draft vision statement. Anything on this list that you think appears in this draft, I want you to mark it up, highlight it, circulate. Notes, whatever.
And you've got five minutes, right?
Yeah.
Four, so.
We'll check in with you.
I think we might have too many adjectives. Grown gracefully. Yeah.
Low. When you have the whole computer. You're.
Yeah. We've done. The like. I believe.
Uh.
My. For. The.
But I. I. I still.
One of the best. Pro.
All. United States.
Except the last thoughts.
And. I'm. Real. And then I got a long. I just. Do. Eventually. I'm. Really. Your family. Who. Was. Spain. Our. People. Yeah. One. Our. Will. Live. They've all gone. You were. Trying. The one. Going. Oh. Now, I. I've been first to start. Second. Yeah. So. We. Very. First. One. And. You're great. Everybody's. But.
Okay, time, everybody. So. Last part of this first bit. So now I would like each group of partners again to present to me, but this time I'm gonna actively mark up the draft. Y'all can see the screen, I hope. Yeah. Um, so I will be putting comments and. Highlighting, but I'm not gonna make any changes just yet until we run through the second part of the process. Just to get the notes down. So I'm gonna start on the other side. Pat and Cassandra. As a Blake for y'all to present. And. Thoughts. Where? Where do you see the bad in our vision statement? It was interesting that we've said different things, but we both kind of highlighted the same areas. Um. So we. We both. Um, kind of highlighted the sentence, next generation pushing the boundaries and groundbreaking technology. Um, we both kind of thought that the whole, the groundbreaking technology was maybe a little bit farfetched from, from my perspective. It's like, we live in Washington state. We have Google. We have Amazon. We have Starbucks. We have Costco. We have Google. You know, it's like, we're not the hub of groundbreaking technology. Um, and then, um, you know, we said that we're, we're proud of our, our, um. What was it? The proud. Oh, you chimed in here.
I'm sorry. Uh, we're, we're proud of this, that we do have some maybe ground, groundbreaking technologies, but they're pitching to one segment of the population. Yeah. So I just wrote. What about, what about family values and those in need? And there's, you could go on and on, but.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, um. One of the things I pointed out was the, you know, the city thrives on resilience and innovation. So, you know, we're talking about our current state from 25 years from now. Like, what are we resilient to? Like, what, what are, what's our resilience? What, what's happening right now that we need to be resilient? Um, in the next 25 years? Uh, and then we said, um. Oh, you didn't have anything on that one. Um, just, you know, too many basically commas, you know, um, kind of overselling it, you know, in the, the next three sentences in the second paragraph. High-tech amenities, pedestrian friendly, thriving downtown, housing options, realtor businesses, quality restaurants, unique shops, blah, 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 blah. It's just kind of overboard. Um. Okay, pause one second, sorry. Okay. Some reason I can't get the new comment to work. So. You ready? Thanks, sorry. You're good. You're good. What? Are you just doing? Tracking? There we go. I got it. Okay, so resilient to what? Talking. Uh, yeah, second paragraph, just all the sentence, all the, all the different comments or commas that are in there, just kind of like run on overselling it.
It's. So.
Um, and then same on the third paragraph. Um, parks, trails, schools, retail, commercial areas, jobs, old century business, rich heritage, oh, you know, just comma, 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 comma. On the third paragraph. Um, and then we both said, um, unwavering community support set it apart from other communities who've lost their way. Like, who we throw in shade at in that statement? Like, what other community? That's, that's kind of that comparison and, and bringing in names of other cities. Um, and.
And based on criteria.
Yeah.
Have we lost our, uh, have we not lost our way compared to others?
Yeah. And then, um, Cedar Willie has stayed true to its values and we said that values are constantly changing. Times are changing. History changes. You know, we're not logging community anymore. We're not a. You know, we're not building dams or hospitals anymore. It's values change. And then the last thing that we both said is that because there's only one Cedar Willie on earth, that it was kind of corny. Thank you.
Respect the dash.
So. One. Dash. Your city. Yeah, I don't even try the dash, like when I'm ordering pizza or something. It's just.
She's the one that coined the term. Cause we were.
Oh.
Respect the dash. No, no, it was good. I thought it was brilliant. It was okay.
Oh, I thought when you said that, I thought. That last sentence.
So what's. What's our? And this committee. I did. We were. And the. 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 Senator. Yeah. Respect the bash. She actually has a T-shirt ready for it.
That's.
Second. And filling out forms. We absolutely will not accept. The item in the, in Cedarville.
Okay. See her for. Next. So. I was okay with the first sentence. Um, I felt like the second sentence from the parenting families who laid a strong foundation to the next generation. I felt like that was sort of saying the first, what the first one was talking about, when it addressed generations. Um, on the groundbreaking technology. I was curious how, how we're gonna see that in 20 years. I don't feel like we can take credit for the things that are happening that's set on, that's up in Bellingham nor Janiki that's out in Hamilton. So what groundbreaking technology is being developed here? Cedar Willie, I'm just not aware of anything. And if it's not something that we can attain, we shouldn't put it in our vision statement. Um, I'm of the thought of the opinion that emphasizing more of a safe community is more important than, you know, we're gonna bring all this groundbreaking technology. And, um, moving on to the second paragraph. Uh, I like rich heritage and recreation. I think it goes, like Casey was saying, was civic and high-tech amenities. Um, the pedestrian friendly, I feel like that's redundant, cause two lines later, you're talking about walkable streets. We're just really trying to push that green agenda here that you can walk everywhere. And like Matt said, can't walk everywhere.
And it's getting worse, I think, is.
Yeah, the, the, so, you know, it's. It's okay to not be pedestrian friendly. Um. And, and unless we have great plans of like putting streetcars in or something, I don't know.
Well, we got shut down. If you go. Good streetcar.
The diverse range of housing options in the thriving downtown. Um, I, I'm just curious what, what that means, diverse range of housing options. I'm aware of an apartment building going in down there, but I'm not aware of anyone actually living down there currently in the second story about the downtown buildings. So if it's not something we're working towards, you know, again, don't put it in the vision statement. Um, I do like the, you know, diverse businesses, but we don't need to list every single business, like quality restaurants, like Casey was saying, unique shops, events, culture. I like events and cultural attractions. We only need to say it once in the vision statement. So we also. Yeah, exactly. Um, not sort of crazy about, um, outdoor activities, meet the locals and experience a strong sense of community. Maybe that can be a little bit reworded. Onto the, the second page. Um, so it says century old businesses. Is that possible? Do we have any businesses that 20 years from now are gonna be century old? About them. Alice's. The whole thing.
Oh.
Are there any businesses that in 20 years are gonna be century old? Cause if not.
I don't think anything. All.
How long have all of them hammer been around?
I think nineteen oh, I wanna say nineteen oh seven.
Okay, so it is possible to have. Possible, yeah. It's hard to. That one. We can say it. Yeah, but I mean, all of their hammer is so well-known, like all around. So maybe something to start. But, yeah.
I think Al's has been around since, I mean, I think building was actually built in the 50s. And it's been actively, but yeah, that would, that would be.
Nina Janiky's be a century old by then, too, right?
Yeah.
They're not going anywhere. Yeah. Um, the year-round events, sort of a duplicate from other places. Um, we have great events here. We just don't need to say it over and over again, essentially. Um, I, I wrote the same thing. You said throwing shade about being better than other company communities. If we're that good, we shouldn't have to even mention another community. Um, I agree with the, or we agree, the last sentence was very corny. Um. And I think that we're trying to oversell it right now. So. I, when we were shown other vision statements, they were very clear, concise, to the point. And I feel like on this, we're trying too hard to sell ourselves. So that's a vision statement should be very clear, not trying to get paid for a present number of words. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Yeah, they thought about it a lot more than I did. Uh, so a, a couple of things. Uh. And this is gonna offend other people saying that you lost your way. Who will be the judge? Cause I gotta tell you, I look at a whole lot of stuff going on in this country right now. A whole lot of people lost a whole lot of ways, in my opinion. Okay, but that, that's my opinion, right? Where somebody else is like, whoa, hey, really? No, this is all good. Uh, so there's certain things in here that we could definitely. Take out, because it really doesn't, uh, have anything to do with, uh, a vision of where we're gonna be in 10 years from now. And there, there's stuff in here that, that is obviously is important. And I, I put three words on my, when I first sat down here. Yeah, we, we do have a history here in Skagit County, period. We, we do. Okay? Uh, what I think has made all community strong is the foundation of where that community came from and why they will be successful in the future. And that C word, community. It's all about community. And I, I just see such a wonderful, especially now, just, like I said, just getting off of the state wrestling championships that I had. The. The pleasure, okay, that somebody trusted me to officiate at that level. I just think community, period, is what we should, uh, be, uh, if we're gonna sell something, community is everything. And, uh, the city, yeah, it's, uh, we have, we have. We absolutely do. There's nobody sitting at this table right now that doesn't believe that. So I'm just repeating what we all know and is why we're all here. So. Yeah, we're looking forward, yeah, our sense of history, why we are who we are. And that sense of community is what we should be selling. That's why we all live here. None of us illegal.
And I'm not real crazy about the sentence, multi-generational neighborhoods feature a mix of housing choices close to parks, trails, schools, retail, commercial areas. I don't feel like in 20 years, we're gonna be there unless we're gonna put a whole lot more schools in, cause we are busing children from.
This whole thing, meet the locals? Nobody hears talks. Nobody does. Seriously, I have to drag conversation out of people's, I mean, thank God, you know, I like you, by the way, because you can talk, right?
It's like in my neighborhood.
God, you actually had a conversation with a stranger in a ballpark. You'd be like, looking at like, if we could, you're like, you're not from here. Right, yeah. We'll speak. Right? Definitely. Right? But it isn't true though, or what? Right? Unless you put yourself out there, nobody, nobody talks in this town. Not even.
It's better than Seattle.
Yeah, no. Yeah.
You're not.
But, but, but let's set the bar as low as we can. That, that's another.
From them.
I mean, that's another thing that's changed. Cedar Willie is that, uh, when I was a kid, you could leave your keys in the car, the doors unlocked on Main Street, and everybody said hi to everybody. People stopped and talked. And I re-experienced it, I think maybe I told this, but I went down to Ogden, Utah, where my sister was living down there. And I re-experienced that. Everybody in Ogden, Utah. We were talking about. Now, when I was in Utah, Pearl, everybody was so nice. How are you? It. Yeah. What are you up to? Yeah.
All right. I wanna hear from our last.
Go ahead.
Over here.
But. I'm gonna tell you. Discover here, but I wanted to talk about what you said real quick. We have a lot of Canadian cousins come down here, quite often. They say this. They say the same thing every time they sit. Why is everyone so friendly in your town? Everybody talks to everybody. And he's, um, they come on the third, second or third of July and say, how come your streets are lined with chairs? As well, they're getting ready for a parade in two days. At Canada, those would be all gone. They'd be. A lot.
By the way.
Okay, so I'm hearing all this negativity and I'm thinking, all I hear is wonderful things about this city, town, whatever it is. And the beauty, people, when they get to our house, they say unbelievable beauty around here. And I don't know. Like, nobody talks to me, must be my Jersey kind of. You're a lovely. Thirty-four years. You're right. Anyway. So. Positive. I'm, I'm a man. Um, I, I, when I first read this, I got stuck in 2046. I just read it, Cedar Willie is, I read it again, like, I read it like six times. And. Daniel helped me a little bit. She was, it's kind of like looking in a, in a crystal ball. In 2046, Cedar Willie is, you know? So I had to kind of grasp that. So I wrote down grammar, cause I can't stand that. But I understand if we're looking at, if we're looking at a crystal ball, it kind of makes sense. And then ingenuity of generations, I wrote, you know, big. Um, the city thrives on resilience and innovation. I put, that's pretentious. Cedar Willie welcomes visitors to experience its rich heritage and recreational civic and high-tech amenities. I put, that's corny.
Slow down. Every.
Higher.
Yeah. Okay. Go to the next. Okay. So this one was big.
Which one?
Was it? No, that was.
City thrives on.
That was, um.
Yeah.
Unattainable, right?
I put pretentious.
Pretentious. Okay. The one before that?
The one before, I put ingenuity of generations is vague. What the heck is that?
Okay, continue.[1622.39]
Um, the first sentence in the next paragraph, I put corny. Cedar Willie welcomes visitors to experience its high-rich and recreational civic. So Ricardo Montebon at the, at the corner welcoming everyone. Welcome, Cedar.
That's good.
It's uh pedestrian-friendly, thriving downtown offers a diverse range of housing options and commercial and retail business come including. Uh, quality restaurant. We both circled this one and said, that's a run-on sentence, uh, trying to be all things to, all things to all people.
Your cap locks on.
Seamlessly connected. Okay, and then the next sentence, all of those are seamlessly connected by walkable streets and gathering spaces. I put unattainable. Meet locals, that was a weird one. I circled it, so there's something wrong with that. I just put grammar, but I just can't meet locals if you're wandering around.
Well, yeah, it's on, it's on the edge of what Joe was talking about, the other joke. Yeah, I mean, what's so important about meeting a local?
Bad thing, do they have bad teeth? Like, what, are we meeting weird locals with bad haircuts? Mullet. You can see a real life mullet. Weird. Yeah, that's a good way to praise everything that we just said. Okay.
And so, I put uh, the next paragraph, first sentence, having grown gracefully and maintained small-town feel, I put that's fictional. I think it's growing clunkily. Medium talent, growing, getting bigger.
So another bad would be too honest.
Clunkily word.
It is.
And then, uh, many communities have lost their way. I circled that one, huh? So anyway, this is, I think we're all in agreement there, that's a link. And then, through it all, Cedar Willie has stayed true to its values. I put fiction. I see, I've been here twenty-one years now, I see things changing. I see businesses moving out more than moving in, but besides one. The community comes together because there's only one Cedar Willie, I wrote corny, just like everybody else. Daniel had some of the same ones circled.
Yeah, he, he covered a lot more. Uh, really, the only thing I had to. And was, um, well, actually, group two there covered it about the comparison. It's just not, it's not a good luck. To, to compare in that final paragraph. Um, like they said, if we really are better, we don't need to say anything, or we will. Say we'll speak for itself, right? So to speak. Um, and also just felt really pretentious. So, so even if you take out that it's century-old uh part and. That sentence with the setting apart from many communities who've lost their way, that next sentence, through it all, through what all, like, we have somehow. Succeeded where everybody else failed, kind of thing. Yeah, it's. I think there's some, I think the rest of that sentence is actually not too bad. Uh, it's, well, the stay true to its values. But welcoming new businesses, neighbors, that's great. Uh, but yeah. Again, I think somebody pointed this out at the last meeting. It feels like, yes, you should respect the past and the foundation, but don't dwell on it too much. Don't compare. Because this is, we're looking forward, right? This is in twenty forty-six, the future. So make a nod at the past, but don't stay there. So.
Yeah, that was, that was really one of the things that I like, uh, which was that it, was that it actually didn't dwell on the past, that it acknowledged the past and we talked, might be, maybe it can be done better.
Okay, well.
This is a ten-year holiday. It's not twenty forty-six, we're looking at twenty thirty-six.
It's twenty, twenty years.
So this is a ten-year.
Yeah, so we update the crop plan every ten years, but it's a plan for the next twenty years. It's a little confusing. So the next time we do this, we'll be looking in the year twenty.
It, it recognizes exactly what we were saying, that, that um, things change, things change with things. So you're going to update regularly, but you're going to look as far out as you think you can safely.
And how good is our vision in twenty forty-six? Is it, is it an asteroid could hit the Earth in twenty thirty-two?
Three percent chance, three percent.
It sounds existential. No, seriously, it's most of all a waste of effort.
Why are we here? And, okay. So the moment we've all been waiting for, we're going to get to the good stuff. Okay, so we're going to just basically repeat. Uh, so I'm going to pass out. I'm sure you get the all over. Unless there's something you don't want. Moms. Doodles. Starts big enough, or would you rather have like a full sheet of scratch paper?
No, I want a full sheet of scratches.
Okay, so again, I'm going to start with an example. Good elements from a vision statement. So an example being. Again, very generalized.
Yeah, this is supposed to be about any company.
Yep, any vision statement. Don't get specific until later. But yeah, take uh five minutes, make a list of good elements. Best vision statement. Take three minutes. You guys were fast. Okay, everybody, time.
I don't have it on here. Because it was everything that we wrote and everything.
So as, as we go through this, there's things in, in here that we, we don't have. You know, we, we all group around. We expect that the ash is only one Cedar Wally. It's true. And then, and here's why that is. What makes this place really special? I've traveled the planet, okay? Literally from Antarctica to the Alps to everything. We got the North Cascades. You have the Skagit River. We literally have an active volcano. Okay, that is literally. So there is, well, it is. All I'm saying is that when we're looking at our vision of previous from other people. We need to take that a little bit, of letting people understand how important it is for all of us. I think that we're all outdoor people and if you're not, you shouldn't be living in this place. Okay, and how, when we have salmon runs and just the importance of the environment for all of us, okay, and why this place is our vision as to we absolutely cherish the fact that we are our outdoor environment. So I think that should be part of our vision to communicate that with people, with how precious this place really is, because it is.
Love it. Okay, so again, hear from all of our little groups.
I thought he was already doing that.
Short phrase.
Outdoor environment, that he said. Actually, I thought it was good.
Pretty amazing. This place rivals any place on the planet.
Just a slight aside here, but I think it's to that is in the vision statements that we had looked at from other jurisdictions, Shalan, Anacortes, whatever. When they mentioned vocal, um, it wasn't so much a tourist brochure, but it was the themes that make them them, right? You know, the, whether it's the gosh, I'm trying to think, you know, the waterfront or something. We, we have that too in our.
We are the gateway to the North Cascades. You know we are, yeah. I just put the characteristics of why our outdoor. Not only unique, but uh, precious, I think, to pretty much everybody. People come from all over the planet. They do, yeah.
So I also had a, a good vision statement. It is positive but grounded. So it's aspirational, but also realistic. Uh, because it's really easy to get delusional sounding.
You repeat that one more time, sorry. Uh, positive but grounded.
Yeah, or, you know, realistic, yeah. Let's bring into that state the key strengths, which I think the outdoor environment is one of those, so. Which also leads into, give a picture of what Cedar Woolley's like when you read this. Do you get an image in your head, you know, visual picture of that? The succinct and straightforward, or simple like this, you say.
She can actually spell.
I know, I'm impressed. I was gonna say. I write in cursive, so it's really, so people can't tell if I spell. Recursive anyway. Um, okay, is that everything? So, um, I said has a strategic goal. Could you say has a goal? And it's attain, is attainable. Clarity. Aligns with values, mission. Purpose, has a purpose. Can be understood by its reader. But I think like the words equal imagine is the same thing. And is motivating. When they read it, they're like, oh yeah, that's mild.
You know, nowhere in here that we have a mention of the importance of our school districts.
That's a specific.
Yeah, hold that up.
You wanna add?
I discovered something about myself when I wrote this.
Yeah.
I, I wrote down all the reasons why I moved here twenty-one years ago and I wanted to stay that way. And so I know that some people are visionaries and, and they wanna move forward into the future. Yeah, I'm the kind of guy that wants to hold the reins and stay, stay small town. Anyway, me? Maybe we can find a happy medium, but I, I wrote down, I, I came here because it's affordable. I don't know if we can attain that in the future. But, uh, I don't know what happened, but it used to be. And then I came here because of the rich history and the beauty. And the great people. So I wrote down, I got down, at the end of this list, I said, I came here in safety, open spaces. But we're losing safety and we're losing open spaces. So I, I'm at a loss. I don't know how to describe how we're gonna be in the future, but I hope it can stay the way it is now.
You're not the only one.
Anyway, I have nothing to add to the list so far.
I'm gonna add nods to history. But.
Yeah, I don't think we should run from. We should embrace. Not, not run away from. Just give it a nod. Just like, okay, I'll bring up another town, won't be in here, but like Anacortes brings up the history of fishing and water. They left all that out. It was their identity. I don't wanna leave.
Okay.
Has an identity.
Retain my identity.
Trying to make sure, uh, you guys, I've got a lot of them already. Um, every word is important. I, I think it's in there, but I, I don't see inclusive. Inclusive, uh, pertains to, um, uh, diverse populations or represents all. Make sure there are people in there in the list. Uh, oh, and you have attainable, but attainable goals. Uh, halfway up. Yeah, um, I think I covered this one too maybe, but acknowledges the past and, uh, but forward looking, basically the opposite of that. And, um, oh, speaks in, uh, layman's language, not climbing during.
Pat messed my head up because he said this looks like it's been written by a real estate person. The last paragraph, and I read it, and I'm like, you're right, this looks like every Redfin listing I ever. Now I can't look at this one the same.
And I didn't know how to word this last one, but I didn't even think of this thing. I think it's sort of, but, um, one of our strengths in terms of just general planning stuff is that we're, we're late to the game, right? When everything else was blowing up in the early two thousands. We were under a sewer moratorium and then we put a moratorium on, um, on tiny lots. You know, we, uh, we tried to do a PRD and it wasn't working. And so they said forty-five, forty-eight hundred or six thousand as a as a minimum lot size for a while, so that we could get it sorted out. And between those things, it kind of stalled growth in Cedar Woolley. And then the two thousand eight, you know, we had two thousand eight. And, uh, the whole real estate market came apart. So we're, we're just now experiencing what almost every other city on the west side of the has gone through already. And so we have a lot of stuff to look at and a lot of chance to, uh, not make the same mistakes and, and figure out problems if the state wants to stay out of the way and, and let us do what Cedar Woolley wants to do. Um, I think that's the thing. So anyway, I, I would say that being late to the game is a, is a strength that we have. In terms of, uh, in playing.
Latecomer? I'm trying to think of how we could.
I mean, it sounds negative, but it's.
Slow and deliberate. Positive spin.
And that's how I describe myself, Joe, is, um, I, I want change, but I want it slow and deliberate, not. Not just three hundred houses here tomorrow and six hundred next weekend.
I see, I would say that is the whole idea behind growth management. Is that it is managed growth. You know that it will grow, but you can, you can guide how that happens.
The deliberate manner, yeah. Cause I'm, I'm intrigued by the whole thing of like, like with the parking thing or the, um, sorry, the one we just. Such pleasures we just did earlier. I'm, I'm, I, I find that fascinating that you get there, you get ninety-five percent of the way and then we start hitting walls and, and it's like just pass it, let a couple of projects happen. In the scale of things, that's not much. Uh, see how it works and then, uh, and then we can go back and, you know, tweak that last, uh, little bit. I mean, always be tweaked. And, uh, and so, uh, yeah, so yeah.
We've done that though. We, we always have a conversation on the urban village mixed views. I've said it from day one. This is one dot up. Let's see it get deployed and see what did we, did we create the Frankenstein? Did we create something amazing? Right home, liking what I see.
I love the tang. Okay, so. Now, I'm gonna have you individually, again, go through the draft. Find out anything that's a must have in the vision statement. Where do these good things pop up? The key.
I'll use black.
You want a highlighter? Trail and marker? Have no idea.
Thank you.
And so those last thoughts. Done. Yeah, send her that partner and share your notes. Highlighted what you're keeping.
The highlight. Through the first.
I got to do a little thing.
We can search to experience. So.
Another problem is.
Your whole. Welcome. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What a vision that we had. Same thing. We don't have.
I've said since we did it.
Yeah.
We get a check. Um. Getting down to. But you don't.
I didn't absolutely have cases, but I think you have.
Because we're looking twenty three to say what we're looking.
Yeah, I'm looking. Three year. Shorter seasons.
My. Yeah.
Everything.
Yeah. That's right. Yeah. We gotta have.
Actually. Much of a problem, like I said.
You know. I mean, less of the less than that actually really so many times a year also.
And I do like. But it's not. And then. I think. Quality life or a fair.
Yeah. It's just.
Funny. Yeah.
Favorite did it.
Yeah, I was sworn off, but.
So.
Well, I'm starting to teach.
From heard a lot of. Um, for me, I like this.
Be a more negative.
The light is.
At least.
I think. I need to. She had to come to the counter. It stays up. But I feel. No, I wanted to say anything highlighted. And if you feel. We're standing.
Three. What's funny you have any? There you go. Yeah. Volley for us. Yeah, sure. I mean, this this is. This is. You guys.
Why I really.
Yeah.
Yes. Of course.
And actually, no, I should have given that out. I. I figured. Longship.
That way.
I was trying to work.
We're not gonna talk about.
People. They're selling.
Kind of.
We thought it had. Once in a while.
And I think.
Right down. So.
Now. So.
Say.
Towards the future and.
Too much.
In that neighborhood.
So I think that's. And. Want to do.
We were. It's watching.
Right, it's like.
Minutes on Friday. Oh, like. So. You know. Very sure when you're sitting around, I'm like, it's not like forty minutes.
Yes. And then I, yeah, I know you're struggling. You've been better and show.
So that's all. Okay, okay, very bad. And so. And I sell land, but they're finding some.
Yeah, this is still two.
Watch two nights. They build a company if we were.
I think it's better that we're just.
So. All through. One. Uh, to get. And so.
Please go.
I mean. He just.
No. Nope.
Is that true? They they. That was. That was. But your. Having.
Success. That's kind of our part of my watch. United States, we do really order, first of all, we. My lot so. Sorry, too, right. They can. First of all, two.
And so.
You guys. Yes. All the time. In the. So.
Yes.
Credit sheet that.
All right, finish up those last thoughts.
I could. The values, values and research.
What?
Go for that one else.
Then he also goes.
Well, thank you, Harrison. Here's my. I used to.
Joe. Come on.
No, the end. You don't like. Scratch.
Tried really hard, man. My old sad.
This is.
But it's all my husband. Oh, that's sick. Okay. So. Now. When we will mark up the good stuff. So I'd like to hear from each of your little groups. And I'm gonna make some minutes. Where we start last. So I start here. Yeah. Well, damn, oh. You want the first, okay.
Pretty much.
We are. Yeah.
Whatever she says.
Slowly, please, slowly. So the the first thing I highlighted in the first paragraph was the pioneering families. Um, I mean, I personally bought a home in Cedar Wully, a historic home from a pioneering family and and so I like this kind of nod to the past. I don't think we necessarily need to use the term pioneering families, but I like the idea of in the first sentence, or at least in the first paragraph, there being a nod to the history. Because you can't have a future without past. And so bringing the history up in the very beginning, I think, is a good place to start.
So question, we were just talking about that. Pioneering families, there were people here way before pioneers came.
Hmm.
The reason it's called scaggin', okay, because it is tribal and I think that there needs to be some inclusiveness of everybody.
Yeah.
And it's not just pioneering family, but everybody that makes the valley the place that it is. Who just, how would we?
It is true.
We don't know. I believe that. If it's a it's a vision statement, we need to include everybody.
Yeah.
How we do it. Wow, what was the like this? That was my only thing, yeah.
Good point, good point. Can't argue with that. Um.
Somebody from the tribe are going.
Oh, yeah. I'm saying I can't argue with it. It's a it's a good statement, yeah. Yeah. Um. Just gonna move on to the second paragraph. Um, I I like, so I I highlighted the word recreational. I like the focus on the agriculture, on recreation, on outdoors, on parks, on the landscape, just kind of the environmental factors. Um, you know, to get to Cedar Wully, you have to get off, you have to go down through the valley coming you know, north on I five, or you're coming south, you know, through a forest and valley. When you're coming south on, or yeah, south on I five, and then you're getting off on Cook Road, you're going through farmland, you're coming off twenty, you know, you're going through agricultural areas too. And so it's like, we're just surrounded by landscape. Um, and so kind of a focus on that. Um, I like the thriving downtown as a as a goal. I don't really feel like it's thriving right now, but I would love for it to be thriving in twenty years. I also do feel like it, the downtown area is the center focus for a lot of our um, city events. It's where we have our parades go through there, both for Christmas and Lager Rodeo. We've got our Christmas tree there, um, the blast for the past and the spring. You know, so there is kind of this focus on that being the central gathering area. Um. I also highlighted walkable streets and gathering spaces. Um, I think we have put a lot of investment in sidewalks, maybe in the last two to three years. And so just continuing for that to be a goal, that we're making walkable spaces. Um, and and maybe having some more just small gathering areas, smaller parks intermixed with these neighborhoods that are going in. Um, on the third paragraph, uh, I said, having grown gracefully and maintained its small town feel. I really like small town feel. My husband was born and raised in Seattle, Everett in Seattle. I was born and raised in Bellevue. We moved here because we wanted to live in a small town. Not every city needs to be a big city. It's not a bad thing to be a small town. It's a niche market. Um, not everybody wants to be a city dweller. So you know, people want to move here to get away like me, and there's nothing wrong with being a small town. Doesn't have to be a small town feel. It could just be a small town. Um. I highlighted year round events, because I do think that the city puts a lot of energy into creating opportunities for communities to get together uh, year round, especially in the summer months, but it's because we live in the live in the Pacific Northwest, but we do have the, you know, Christmas tree lighting and stuff in December. Or. Um, and then I said welcoming new businesses and neighborhoods. I want Cedar Wully to be an area where we are open to not just being a place where generational families have their kids and never leave. Like, it's it's good to be a bedroom community too, because you can't live and work in the city with the wages that the city offers. You need people, you know, who can telecommute like I do. And, you know, people who are willing to commute like my husband does to bring some diversity into the community. Uh, and then I highlighted the sentence, this community uh, remains a place where history, progress and community come together. I really just like that sentence in general. I wouldn't change it. I got a little lost when we were talking recreation. I only highlighted the recreational. Was there other ones in the second paragraph? In the second paragraph, I said recreation downtown. The thriving downtown is a good is a good, I think, attainable goal. Um, because it is kind of this focus for a lot of the um planned community events. And then I said walkable streets and gathering spaces. Again, is a really good goal to have to build in the infrastructure so that we do have really nice walkable spaces. Thank you. Anything else, Eric?
Um, I agreed with everything she said, and she said everything the way I'd like it said, but I might add that the word Cedar Wully should be in there too.
Not in the last sentence.
And quality of life, I liked that. There's quality here.
Okay, so. What is quality of life?
Second page.
Oh, here it is.
Second line. I I didn't catch what you said about Cedar Wully. To. There.
I I just, I highlighted the word Cedar Wully too, so we won't forget.
Definitely want to leave the name of town.
Someday I'll tell you a really funny story about that. She's already.
Cedar Wully here.
I think possibly to your point, taking that wonderful last sentence and instead of saying this community, since it has community twice in that sentence, just take this community and say Cedar Wully. With each step forward, Cedar Wully remains a place where history, progress and community come together.
I like it.
And then you have a perfect sentence.
Yeah. Yeah. And you end the statement with Cedar Wully in there. That's I like that.
You're saying to take out the rest of the Cedar Wully.
I I think it should be mentioned at the first in the end, but we wouldn't want it to be sent. Well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else? So we like. Cedar Woolley is a city built on artwork, dreams and the ingenuity of generations will have turned vision into reality, you like that sentence? Then we would add, as the gateway to the cascades.
North Cascades.
North Cascades, not South Cascades.
Some of the Cascades.
As the gateway to the North Cascades. And then. Starting that first sentence of the second paragraph, Cedar Woolley welcomes visitors to. Experience its rich heritage, comma. Thriving downtown. Year-round events and cultural attractions. Okay, we need to repeat that one more time. We just sort of through all the words. Make sure I highlighted the words. We cherry pick, that's good, I like it.
So Cedar, read that again.
As the gateway to the North Cascade, Cedar Woolley welcomes visitors to experience its rich heritage, comma, thriving downtown. Comma, year-round events. And cultural attractions. We had to find it, sorry. Cedar Woolley welcomes visitors. Heritage, um a fresh downtown, I even know. Um a year round events.
Not including the Upper Skagit tribe without saying.
Actually, didn't you want to start that sentence as as the gateway?
Yeah, that's what I got. Oh, that's, I totally stole that from Casey. Thank you. They said, we want to be able to read the paragraph and know what city it is without being told necessarily. Okay, there you go, fix it. Anything else? Then going on to the third paragraph, having grown gracefully and maintained its small town feel, like what Casey said. Multi-generational neighborhoods, mix of housing choices, close to parks, trails, schools. Retail, commercial areas and jobs. Sort of piecing together, what is that, two different sentences into one?
Okay, so read that again, please. I didn't. Having gracefully grown and maintained its small town feel. With its multi-generational neighborhoods. Mix of housing. Excuse me, mixed of housing choices. Oh, sorry, close to parks. Trails. Schools. Retail, commercial areas and jobs, that whole sentence.
And then the last sentence. What do you mean, battery is low, send help.
What do what do people think about removing gracefully?
Growth is growth, I gotta tell you, a lot of people are telling you.
Wordsmithing deliberately slow into. I don't like multi-generational neighborhoods either, because where else except for in a fifty-five and up community, are you gonna have a neighborhood that's not multi-generating?
Well, it interesting in in the architectural planning world. Usually what happens, you build a new neighborhood unless it's designed for the uh for the elderly. And you get all families with small children. And they, so they start out that way, right, and then people move out. Maybe when their kids are out of school, and then you get whoever wants to buy, and so then you might get old people buying it, you might get another young family moving in. Alderwood Lakes is a good example, when I was there, it was all young kids, and then um and then. Uh now it's a complete mix, we've got probably three, three families with small children right now. And um and some midlife people. There's three, about two families, four families.
I mean, we're, I mean, we have kids that are twelve, twenty-five, our neighbors are old, and we have grandkids. We have people who live across the street from us who are newlyweds, started home. You know, and then people in the corner just had a baby, you know, and this is a rental, so it's just like, it's, we're we're all mixed up.
See your point, yeah, because all neighborhoods. It it changes over time, but basically all gender neighborhoods go through. Uh being one family and then another family, and then after that it. Go anywhere.
Saying multi-generational, it's just like saying, oh, we have a roof.
Gracefully, of course.
And then we like, one of the last sentences, sort of wordsmithed a bit, through it all, Cedar Woolley welcomes new business and neighbors. Who bring fresh energy and new opportunities. Just a moment, what did you say? If it died, then it should recover. I'm sure this, I probably won't know what I meant. Who gave her a green pen? I think it'd be common and all, and all you guys for. Daniel, you worked with Mount Vernon, right? I'm on session, Mount Vernon Presbyterian Church. And last night we made a meeting, they're trying to get the. They're trying to get churches to take these eight foot by eight foot containers. On their mind, for living spaces, no. Utilities.
Only two more steps and we'll be in cardboard boxes.
I think Burlington Palace. Modeling it, I don't think we've seen an application come in yet, it's one of the.
Oh, are you waiting, I'm sorry. I was filling the space while you guys were doing the. Oh, we're waiting, okay. It just was concerning to me, it's like, they want the church within thirty days to approve. Three of these eight foot by eight foot boxes for homeless people to be able to move into, it's like, where where's the bathrooms? Well, there's not gonna be utilities going to, it's like, so you're basically putting a jail cell. Eight foot by eight foot box.
They're gonna have to do an application for that, and they'll have to show that they can provide. Facilities, they're so.
Being a part of this commission helped a lot, because they, the the understanding, someone had a discussion years ago with the mayor, before he was the mayor, he's like. Well, we use church land, because we don't have to go through the planning commission. To get approval for things like this, that's what they understood, I'm like. Let me tell you about this. No city's gonna allow you to just put metal boxes.
Putting in tiny homes, all the churches over here with that.
Yes, no utilities, no water, no bathrooms, it's like, are they gonna bring a trailer? They're just trying. They, they're gonna have to do trailers or something.
It is a different thing, but yeah. Yeah, it'll be interesting to see what. Yeah, I want to say Burlington has something, but you have to provide facilities, there's no. It's so either it has to be a church or something, so.
There's one by uh his place in Burlington, and they have like a community, it's like a community kitchen and. His and her bathrooms, it's a community space where people could come in and serve food and bring clothes and they can do. Free medical. Okay, and so the the last sentence, uh we like. Uh through it all, Cedar Woolley welcomes new business and neighbors. Who bring fresh energy and new opportunities, we think in twenty years, we'd like to see Cedar Woolley be that way. Deliberately slow neighbors and businesses. And that is all we have. You're welcome. Alrighty. So I guess now it is almost nine, I want to do a time check with y'all. Any more, so you, have you both gone through yours? And then is there another activity after this? So we're done with the activity stuff, at this point, we have. Notes just to kind of help focus us on where these just needs to be. Um it really the hard work of how are we gonna wordsmith this to meet all of those. Objectives, so it'll take a while to do.
So what we could do is we could either do that now, or we could. Now that we have your notes, staff goes back to our lab, and we wordsmith this and send it out to you tomorrow. And then individually. Yeah, don't hit it, and then send it back to us.
The point of doing this tonight was, because we were on timeline, get it done.
Exactly, but it trying to still be in the interest of everybody's heart, so just want to make sure we're not.
Yeah, because it really might take a while to. No, no, that was the original plan, but we're not, we just weren't gonna make it, so it'll go. March twel-.
I would say we should let. Commissioner Batizzi and Freiburger get through their. Get through their, like, sentences that they want to stay. Or that they want to keep, and then, and then you guys go back to your mad scientist lab and spit out the next iteration. Of what this can be, and then maybe in another week or something, we can reassemble, maybe an online option. Yeah.
Sorry, we cut you guys off.
Well, I'll try to make this quick, because I I feel like. You guys covered everything pretty thoroughly, um and I had already, as I'm sure everybody else did, sent in kind of a rewording of this. To you guys yesterday, and I think we've done even better in this particular session, but. I also. Like, honestly, that first paragraph, I I like it pretty well, it definitely, and as Commissioner Batizzi said, you know, could. Use to maybe be a bit more inclusive, we were talking about what would that sound like, it's a little bit hard, I liked what, I think it was Anna Cordes had. Actually included a line in there about tribal history or something, and I was thinking, oh, they're checking a box, but also thinking, no, that's very. Much part, they are acknowledging a very critical part of their history, I don't know. I don't know anything about the tribal history here, obviously, there's history all over this county. But in the Upper Skagit tribe, it's right outside, so. So I don't know, we could put something in there along with the pioneering families, or just. Make something as you, someone said, to make it a little bit more inclusive, but still have that nod to the the history. Otherwise, yeah, I I like that pretty well. And then. See, second paragraph, Cedar Woolley welcomes visitors, that that first sentence. I like the, you know, rich heritage, recreational civic, not so sure on the high tech amenities bit, but. Kind of sounds like an advertisement, but. I don't know what we put in this place. Thinking about that.
Is that pretentious, is that a good word for? I mean, it's nice that you, it's a, it could be a commuter's neighbor, if you're close enough to. You know. Technology hub, but far enough away to get out of the fray or something.
I mean, it's not terrible. I mean, I I guess it gets point across that we're not like a backwater.
Yeah, but you can say, you know, we're the, we're the recreational, we're the, we're the back door. We're the recreational back door of a high-tech city, or something like, of a high, right, it's like, work. It's there, you can drive there in an hour and a half, but that's not us. Driving distance to.
We we already live in the uh in the agricultural scenic corridor, which is, that makes sound like the rich people's country player, yeah. I laugh every time I come down Conway Hill and see that sign.
Isn't that where we are, I'm pretty sure that's what they think we.
That's what they think we are, yeah.
I don't know, I don't have a suggestion for a good alternative to high-tech amenities, because that does really get it across in a pretty short. Two words, but.
Garbage and chat GPT and it'll spit something beautiful out.
It does, yeah.
Actually, Commissioner Burnett has a beautiful. Iteration. Yes. I use chat GPT to write mine, and then he copied and pasted mine into chat GPT and then had chat GPT edit the one.
Took your chat, put it in Gmail. But you could change it here and here. One thing, I I didn't want to speak up while you're talking, but you were trying, at the beginning, you were looking for words. The AI came up with rich heritage, which covers.
Right. So, right. Yeah, except for if we do use rich heritage, jump at the top, we need to take it out somewhere else, because they think we have it. Unless we've already struck it out.
I'm making a rich heritage.
Just trying not to be redundant.
Everything you put in it, in perfect order. We could work with the.
We cheaply consultant. Save the couple, save some budget.
I think it gives you ownership into the process.
And then moving on to to paragraph three, I'm also. More or less okay with the small town feel because I just don't know how else to get that across. I did like how Commissioner Huggins kind of. Said gracefully grown instead of grown gracefully. I I it just switching that around, kind of giving a new. Life or something, but. Also, yeah, take out multi-generational. And just have what you guys said about the.
Neighborhoods.
Combining that stuff that was. That's good because we're trying to shorten this. Aren't we trying to shorten this up to maybe two paragraphs if possible?
Or one?
For one?
Yeah.
City wants to be red, we're one.
Yeah, and the chat GPT will reverse you actually.
Oh, ten words. Do we hear ten?
Just do it. Wait, let's take.
And then same same with those last two sentences, welcoming new business and neighbors who bring fresh energy. I think that's great. And then, of course, that final sentence is great. So.
And we might be able to get this to one paragraph. I like that because when I saw three, I was like, oh, boy.
No.
Yeah, right. I can't even.
I'm sorry, Danielle, can you repeat the one on the last one you said?
Oh, I just the, just those last two sentences are pretty good, at least. I don't know, the stayed true to its values, art could take or leave that, but the welcoming new business and neighbors to bring fresh. Energy and opportunities. I think that's pretty good. And then, of course, that last sentence is, I like that, so.
Everybody's really thinking about, look at my answer.
Yeah, so I will take this back to the lab. The lab and we will. Try to incorporate all of these comments that we got together. Thank you for taking the time. It took a while. But I think I actually have some really good feedback to go on now.
No, I'm not. They take that, put it in chat GPT or Gemini. Really amazing tool. I did all my performance reviews with it this year too.
I'll get a shot of my own and then maybe put it in.
All employees and I was just like, I just copied their goals and I put them in chat GPT. I'm like, okay, so they did this. We have a corporate account for a reason, like use it.
Okay, so we'll end a day tomorrow. I should have. Three guys first. Check your email, please.
And so tomorrow's Wednesday, so by Friday or maybe by Monday, so you have a weekend to kind of. Some, okay, how about like Monday by five, we get back.
And I'll make sure to reiterate that.
Nice job. That was fun.
Yeah, good job.
Outside consulting firm.
I I do.
Yes, it was more productive. Good job.
Her idea, yeah. You get an A plus for.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm new to this planning commission. Is every paragraph going to be this?
No. Open the whole document.
Make one section of you guys to be able to.
No, I just, just for clarity. Cottage clusters will be the twenty. Do we have to make motions at the end or anything?
No motions.
The meetings that you heard in nine oh three.
Yay. And leave my notes because you need to take these, right?
I'll be stealing all of your notes. I'll be stealing all of your notes.